...of Wairega City Council to order, all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Please silence your cellphones. Also, I did want to announce, before we get too deep into our agenda, that the closed session tonight has been pulled from the agenda. Public comments. This is the time for public comments. Council may ask questions, but may take no action during the public comment period of the meeting, except to direct staff to prepare a report or place an item on a future agenda. If you are here to make comments on a specific agenda item, you may speak at this time. If not, at that time, if not, this is the time. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Speakers, please speak from the podium. State your name and mailing address so that city staff can respond to you in regard to your comments, or provide you with information if appropriate. You are not required to state your name and address if you do not desire to do so. So, welcome. Joan.
Hi, I'm Joan Babro, 824 Nap Street, Wairega, California. And I'm here because we finished the Wairega Welcome Sign Project last fall, and we have not really honored the people who have volunteered and have helped us with this project. And thank you, Rheta, for getting the signs up here. This is the south, excuse me, this is a north interchange sign, as it appears today, I took the pictures today. This is, actually, they're both.
They left. Can you get them back? There you go.
This is the south interchange sign, as it appears today.
And this is the north, right?
That is the...
That's the north.
North.
That is the north, the trees behind it. Yeah. Okay. A grant from the Wairega Enrichment Fund at Shasta Regional Community Foundation, with the help of volunteers, the city of Wairega have restored the sign structures. The Wairega Enrichment Fund is a new fund started at the Shasta Regional Community Foundation, strictly for nonprofits in the Wairega area and projects for Wairega. This was our first grant. What started as a simple project became more complicated.
Of course.
Yes, we thought we could just paint the signs, they were white, they were really deteriorating. The north sign was, had toppled over, and it was, it had two braces holding it up. And the south sign was in better shape, but the top of the signs were just a mess. So, so we, because of rotting wood, after much deliberation, it was thought that it's best to build new structures, so we used brown, treated pressure wood that would not need painting. David Franklin, David's in the audience tonight, volunteered to design and complete the carpentry on the new signs and his workshop, along with the help of Charles Gillingham. Guy Scott painted the south interchange base when it decided that the footing of the structure was well established and we didn't have to dig it out. Ralph Sterrett refurbished the logo on top of those signs that was peeling and disrepair. I just looked at them and said, "Ralph, why don't you just go out and buy some new plywood?" And he said, "No, Joan, I can do this, and I can make it last for 20 years." So Ralph did the repair and the heading on the logos on both signs. Don East volunteered to artistically position the signs on the structure. Don's here tonight. Organization and churches that had signs on the structure were contacted personally and given a handout. We had guidelines which we had to go by. And Brian Meek, Mary Ellen, Mary Ellen's here tonight, and I were in charge of taking the signs around and handing out the guidelines. City of Wairega Public Works Maintenance Division, under the direction of Ben Miller, removed the old sign structures and installed the new structures. This project could not have been accomplished with the help of all the above. In the old structure, there was 13 organizations, eight churches, and two organizations that were defunct on the structures. The new structure will accommodate 40 signs and 10, if we have to use each side of the poles. We have 21 organizations on the signs now, and 10 churches for 31 signs. And there's still some to come in, it's just, they kind of come in, and they're taken down to city yard, and then the city puts them up, city crew. There were no requirements, except that the signs had to be 18 by 18. This would allow us to get more signs on the structures. They could use any materials, they could have anyone do their signs, they could do them themselves, or they could hire out to have them done. It was amazing, because everyone came through, we picked up some new organizations, and every, it's amazing that we had such a great response.
The only one missing is Rotary.
No, there's one other missing.
Oh, which other one?
The Masons.
Oh, the Masons are missing on Rotary. What happened to the Rotary sign that was in your office?
I have the old one, I'm supposed to order a new one.
Might want to do that.
Yeah, might want to.
So, if there's any questions, I have some things I need to hand out tonight. I'd like to hand, gone.
Oh, nice.
David?
Brother. Wonderful.
And Mary Ellen? One and stuff. And, this is the city of Wairega.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Oh, it's beautiful. We need to get a picture. We don't get off that easy. Rheta, could you take a picture of somebody? Why don't we all go out front?
And I didn't even bring my camera.
Well, I have a phone, and I think Rheta has a phone, so, come on down, everybody, we'll get a picture. In fact, why don't we have the recipients come down? Dave, and Don, and Mary Ellen?
I don't think anyone's here from the newspaper. You and Joan go up, Mayor, Mayor, you guys go up, go, go, go.
You don't need me in there.
Don't need me in there, same pictures that are on the screen.
I'll slide out. No, no, it's gonna get too big, I think, just, we need to recognize them, that's what we need to recognize. Thank you, David, appreciate it.
Okay, here we are, Rheta's over there.
One, two, three, Wairega.
Wairega.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. The community supported.
It is a community support.
Somebody else's name for the next one.
Okay. Because this is a down...
Sure.
We don't have a lot of money, so we have to partner with someone.
Be careful, camera puts on 10 pounds. I know. Tell them that Debbie sees the picture. Thanks.
Gosh, where can we put this, you guys? We need to hang it on the wall or something.
Or the entry at City Hall?
Oh, yeah. How about if we put this in the entryway, it says City Hall? That'll be nice.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you, yes, any, anyone have any questions? Other than to say a huge thank you?
Yes, looks wonderful.
Yes, it is.
Thank you so much.
You guys did a great job, appreciate it.
Good job, and, yes, the signs entering into town from both ends were getting kind of sad looking, so thank you for making it a better welcome to the city. Thank you, we appreciate that. Okay, great.
Awesome.
Lieutenant Betts?
Oh, yes, I've seen him in the paper tonight.
So, Chris Betts, Lieutenant, Wairega Police Department, introduce you guys to Officer Aaron Smith.
Hello, man.
So Officer Smith was our Peace Officer of the Year this year.
Awesome, congratulations.
It was, uh, pretty awesome. So, just a little bit about Aaron, we call him A-A-Ron though.
A-A-Ron.
We have a bunch of nicknames for each other, but we call, Aaron, Aaron's learned to live with us. So Aaron's been on the job for about three years, came from Redding, lives here now, married, actually lives in Montague. Over the last year, Aaron has done a great job, he's gone above and beyond, he's authored numerous search warrants, which we don't, you know, usually a patrol officer doesn't do, for thefts, for identity theft type crimes. So that was really great, that he took it upon himself to learn how to write a search warrant, how to go to the courts, get it, and then to serve a search warrant. And he did all this on his own, with very little help, so, awesome. Officer Smith makes it a priority to get acquainted by a first-name basis to leaders, first-name basis to leaders of our schools, organizations, and churches. At one point in January of last year, we had one of the few snowstorms that we had, so he was out, he was actually seen out in uniform, standing in a foot of snow, shoveling an elderly female, elderly lady's door stoop for her, so that she can actually leave her house safely without falling or getting hurt.
That was very tough.
And it wasn't us.
No. This is the kind of stuff that, that Aaron does all the times, this is the kind of stuff that's missed in the media. This is the kind of things that the Wairega Police Department takes pride in. We'll get a call at 3:00 in the morning of an 80-year-old lady whose porch light went out, and we'll actually go change it for her. These are the kind of things that we do that gets missed in the media, but Aaron, over the last year, has shown what we do as police officers for the city of Wairega. I did pull some stats, just to let you guys kind of know what one, just one of our patrol officers do. Obviously, Aaron stood out last year, but Aaron ran 3,500 calls for service, just himself. Out of those calls for service, 372 were cases that he had to sit in front of a computer and type. He had 97 traffic citations that he issued, 160 total arrests, 11 of which were drug-related, 35 felony arrests, and 70 misdemeanor arrests. So, the Wairega Police Department is quite active, that's just one of our officers, and all of our officers' stats were within that 3,000-area calls for service, so it's really good to have Aaron on board, he did a great job last year, and he makes us, us, the police department, and us, the city, look good. So that's, that's great, so, that's, those are the reasons why Aaron was chosen to be our Officer of the Year this year.
Awesome, congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job, you make us proud. Okay, anyone else have anything for, for public comments that are things that are not on the agenda? If not, then we'll proceed. Okay, discussion, possible action, consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove any item, an item, for discussion, or a member of the audience wishes to comment on an item. The city manager recommends approval of the following consent calendar items. A, approval ratification of payments issued from March 8th through March 21st, 2019. B, approval of minutes of the meeting held March 7th, 2019. And C, acknowledged receipt of the 2018 General Plan Housing Element Progress Report.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion two?
To accept the, to accept the consent calendar as it's listed.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the items on the consent calendar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item number two, discussion, possible action, adopt resolution approving requests associated with the special events of Mechanics Bank. I understand we have Mechanics Bank in the audience, and it's known as the Summer Concerts in the Park. Come on down. The summer concerts in the park are probably one of the favorite things, maybe except for the fair. It goes on all year long.
We are very excited, thank you first of all for allowing me the opportunity to come for you this evening. My name is Laura O'Rey, Regional Marketing Coordinator for Mechanics Bank. So, for the summer concerts in the parks, we respectfully request the use of the Lower Minor Street Park for the events scheduled from 3:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m., the hauling, setup, and use of the Wairega Community Stage, access to power and power provided at the Minor Street Park location, as well as Wairega Police Department's walk-throughs as available, of course. We appreciate the continued support the city has shown us throughout the years, and we look forward to another exciting content lineup.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And you came here on the right night, because we have, we have Lieutenant Betts here.
I saw that.
The walk-through at Minor Street Park. So I've seen the officers walk through, I didn't realize that it was in the contract, I should have known that. Okay, great, any questions?
Couple questions.
Okay.
Do you got all your sponsors in line?
We do, yes. This year, we are fortunate enough, now that we are Mechanics Bank, we've got only season sponsors, but we have all the season sponsors lined up, yes.
Good. When's it gonna be released, as far as the posters and everything?
We are finalizing the artwork for the posters, we do have the band lineup available, it's in the process of the final crossing the Ts and dotting the Is. So, yes, and I'd be happy to provide that to the city as soon as it's available.
That'd be awesome, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
And it looks like the dates are Friday, June 28th, Friday, July 12th, Friday, July 19th, and Friday, July 26th.
Yes, yes, and in addition to that, we will be holding a concert at Hoy Park in Lake Shastina on the 21st of June, as well as Jamming on Main in Etna on August 4th this year, it's a Saturday, and the Blackberry Festival on Shasta Labor Day weekend.
Good, good, good. Do you have other vendors coming to of any sort?
We do not handle the vendors at Minor Street Park, that is fully up to the city if they'd like to allow it. Last year, we did have success, I noticed, with the ice cream vendor and the hot dog vendor.
Exactly.
They did pretty, pretty well, so.
I think Liz takes care of that, don't you, Liz?
It's in me.
Okay, great. Okay, any other questions?
No.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Remove approval of the resolution approving the summer concert series.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a, and a second to the recommended motion that the council adopt a resolution approving the requests associated with the special events known as Mechanics Bank Summer Concerts in the Park. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Okay, motion carries. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you for being here.
Oh, yes. Laura, we work with Laura Loretz-Car, and Mechanics Bank has been a sponsor of our concerts and, and we're just so happy to have them as part of our program.
Thank you, Joan. Yes, yes, Mechanics Bank is dedicated to the community, so, thank you.
And we appreciate that. Thank you. Good night. Okay, so, item number three, discussion, possible action, adopt resolution authorizing the County of Siskiyou to submit a household hazardous waste regional grant application on behalf of the County of Siskiyou as lead agency, and the city of Wairega as one of the eligible participating agencies.
Mayor, members of the council, as, as usual, we like to do things regionally when it comes to recycling, and this is one of those programs. The county's invited us to join in their submission of a household hazardous waste regional application for the grant program, and we would recommend approval.
Any details I've left out?
No.
Good program, we definitely recycle a lot of waste, so.
Stuff.
Stuff, yeah, we recycle a lot of stuff.
Okay. Well, I know that the Cal Recycling Program is a good program, and it's a good opportunity for our citizens. Any questions?
No.
Do I have a motion?
Motion, adopt a resolution authorizing the County of Siskiyou to submit a household hazardous waste regional grant application on behalf of the County of Siskiyou as lead agency and the Wairega, excuse me, city of Wairega as one of the eligible participating agencies.
Let me go, I have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. All right, so item number four is discussion, possible action, Wairega Police Station retrofit project. So, is this Rheta? Yes, this is Rheta.
Aye, we have a special guest this evening to help navigate through this, because this is the final phase for the takeout of the loan at the completion of the Wairega Police Station, and long project, and believe it or not, Cameron was, and his team were, back in 2014, when we were first thinking about it, having conversations of what we could do for financing and things like that, so I'm gonna turn it over to help navigate for, I think this is the first deal, P, for some of you, Norm, I know you've done them in other entities, but Cameron is here from Weest Law Firm, and without further ado, I'll turn it over to him, he's our own counsel.
And he's our attorney handling this, correct?
Yes, that's right.
And you came all the way from Santa Cruz, welcome.
Thank you, thank you so much, it's beautiful, thank you for having me. And it has been a long process, and I'm so happy to, to be here, I drove by the police station, one of these days I'd love to get a tour, you know, but...
That's the guy right there.
I know. I was, I was taking mental notes of his, of his face to make sure I didn't mess it up when I went down and looked for the right person, so I'll make sure to get up Officer Betts, so that was, that was a great presentation, too, and that, and again, public safety is such a nice achievement when you can help in that regard, so I've been, I take a lot of pride in this, this kind of work, especially when you can do something for, for this, for public safety. So, yeah, with, with that, I guess, just to put it in context, you know, this transaction is, is very complex, when you look at the underpinnings of what, what it's all about, I can certainly summarize, which I will in a minute, but I, just to step back, it is really equivalent to going through a full, full-blown IPO, initial public offering for an equities market, so, you know, when people talk about, like, a Wall Street, you know, merge, or a public offering happening of a company going public and issuing stock for a corporation, this is the exact same kind of legal underpinnings that takes place in that regard. It involves SEC, it involves IRS, it involves state and federal laws up and down the spectrum. So, the only thing it doesn't have is what's called an official statement, which is the equivalent of the offering document that you would see in a stock offering, but the legal process is all the same, it's, so it's quite involved, and, and especially in California. California has a lot of very nuanced laws, its constitution is the primary body of law that creates real burdens for municipal government to issue debt. It was put in place back when, back in the 70s, when property taxes were starting to skyrocket, public services were getting implemented through property tax measures, and there was an over-adjustment of sorts, so they, they curtailed property taxes, and they made it very, very difficult for government to raise any kind of money for its essential city services, essential public functions. So, this is a process that has been able to come through the case law, through the court system, to say, it's a legal process that has been vetted many, many times in courts now, case law, it's not, it's not rooted in statutory law, surprisingly. So what it really is about is leasing an asset to another entity, in this case, the Job Council. The asset in this case is the police station, so it is, we need to get the asset legally to that corporation to be able to lease it back again, so that you have an obligation to make payments. Those payments are lease payments, and really, they're corresponding to the $2.7 million in debt that you will be incurring over 40 years, and the debt is placed with USDA. If it were, like I said, if it was done in a public offering or in a municipal bond issue, we would place it with investors. In this case, your investors are USDA, which is a really nice relationship that you have going, they, they offer great rates and terms, and this is a wonderful financing program. The documents, to summarize the documents, you have a site lease, which gets the asset over to the corporation, you have a lease agreement that gets the payment stream back to the, so that the city can make a payment under the lease agreement, and then, those payments are taken under the indenture of trust, with a trust agreement, they are sequestered through your finance director, who's acting as the trustee in this matter. The trustee, finance director, takes those payments, puts them into a special earmarked fund, and pays them over to USDA, your investor. So that's done through the trust agreement. There is an assignment agreement of all the rights and remedies in the trust agreement, or in the lease agreement, to USDA, so that they have a security, a security that they now, instead of a bank, where you'd get a bank loan, they have some rights and remedies under that lease agreement. The reality is that your USDA has already looked at your financial statements, they're very comfortable with your financial position, you are doing very well as a city, fiscally sound, fiscally responsible, so all that homework has been done and vetted, there is, there's no issue whatsoever there, so that's why you have a great partner. They, they've offered wonderful terms, I think it's a 3.5% interest rate, over 40 years, that's unheard of.
It's a great rate.
It really is. So, those are the doc, the legal documents, as I said, I mean, I've, I've done workshops for hour, you know, for hour segments at a time, so I know this is, this can be overwhelming in some part, but happy to answer any questions, or going to need details you might wish to go into, but, again, my, you've hired us as your counsel, your legal counsel, we do this all the time, not saying don't ask questions, but I think we have, with your staff, taken them and answered every question, and so now we're here for, for counsel, but I know that you've worked with your staff, so you may not have questions this evening, so.
Are there any questions? Anyone has a question? Well, I want to thank our staff, because I know that you've worked long and hard on this, and thank you also, Cameron, for working with our staff. I really would encourage you, before you leave town, I don't know how soon, but to go over and see it, because the police station turned out really very nice, it's very professional, very well done, and, and Lieutenant Betts, I'm sure, would be happy to take you on a tour and show you, even after hours, you never know, right? He's got some pull, he has a key.
I hope I've been a good guy this year.
Whatever.
Thank you.
So, if there are no questions, do I have a motion?
I will make the motion to adopt a resolution approving the issuance of Series 2019 Certificates of Participation for the purpose of financing a portion of the cost of acquiring, construction, furnishing, and equipping the new city of Wairega Police Station, and in connection therewith authorizing and directing execution of a site and facilities lease, a lease agreement, a memorandum of lease agreement, a trust agreement, a purchase offer, and an assignment agreement, authorizing a lease financing with the Siskiyou County Job Council, and approving related documents and official actions in connections with the foregoing.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Okay, motion carries, great. Thank you so much.
It's a real pleasure.
Oh, we have to do Section B?
Section B.
Okay, so, item number four, Section B, do I have a motion or questions?
I'll make a motion, we adopt Resolution 2019-12, replacing Resolution Number 2018-2, decreasing the principal amount of the loan to $2,700,000, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Wairega, authorizing and providing for the issuance of indebtedness for the purpose of providing a portion of the cost of acquiring, construction, enlarging, improving, and/or extending its Wairega Police Department new station retrofit project facility to serve an area lawfully within its jurisdiction to serve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 4B. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? No? Okay, motion carries, great, so that's item 4A, 4B. Any, any 4Cs? No? Okay, thank you so much, we really appreciate it.
It's been a pleasure.
Okay. Oh, you're going out the back door?
I'll be back.
Okay. She's probably gonna meet you on the other side. Thank you, Cameron, safe travels.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we're on to item number five, which is discussion, animal control facility, Councilmember Baird. We got some nice, we got some things from you. With pictures and stuff.
Yes, I like pictures.
Yes.
Okay, as everybody knows, I'm gonna cover...
Okay, as everybody knows, I'm going to cover up the history really quick. I wasn't expecting so many people, so try to keep up. If you have questions, I'll open it up at the end. So after, I've been on this two and a half years, something like that. Is that about right?
Probably.
It probably seemed longer, but.
Yeah, some of the records I saw. Okay, so after extensive research, going out to see, this is regarding the animal control facility. Keep in mind, it's a facility as opposed to a shelter. There is a big difference on the function of the building. Okay, so Steve and I went on a few field trips and visited with other entities like Rescue Ranch, talked to Siskiyou County. Also reviewed purchase of veterinary facilities. And we brought everything down to one facility, which I had focused my directions on. And then after discussing with the new chief, he presented another option, which I'm very comfortable with. It's more cost-effective, might be a little quicker to achieve the goals that we need to achieve as well. So the other option between Channel Four, using that as an administrative building and building kennels alongside it. The other option is to remodel the existing. With the previous police chief, there was an issue with allowing the public to go inside the public works facility through the gates and stuff. So there was concerns with liability, privacy, security, all this. Okay. The current chief, Gamache, is in favor of the remodel. I think he is having concerns with the cost of, that's going towards the, the idea of a new building. But anyway, I have been reviewing along with John Machado, our animal control officer who's in the audience. Yes. And the current chief, Norm has been working with me a little bit on it. I try to keep him in the loop, but he's in his busy season right now. So that basically is the history of how I got to this point. So what I'm working on now is the options for remodeling the current building. And I did have a draft person who isn't here, draft of the, the current facility into where it could go. Which, it looks really, really pretty, I thought. But there's so many options available for the building that I think it should be decisions made between the police department, the current animal control officer as to what the needs are that are required to handle the volume of dogs and animals that we receive, their efficiency of the building as far as heating, as far as cleaning, as far as accessibility to the kennels for the attendant to clean and, and do all of that. So the option with the current building. With the blueprints that are out, actually, somebody wanted to see and they could, I have an extra one here. But with the blueprints that are out, I think Office, Lieutenant Betts is thinking that we don't quite need as many as what we have drafted here on the paper. So there are some savings there. In the write-up, if you all noticed, council members, if you noticed, I put the original bid in there from Chief Bowles regarding what he wanted to have done. For you people out there, the audience, an electrical upgrade at the tuna ninety thousand, a new roof, tuna forty thousand, which I think is low now. But retractable cover or garage doors that can keep an even temperature, that is still a viable option as opposed to bypass doors, which would still work. The advantage to having the open air facility that we have is the fact that it keeps germs, parvo, the odors down, this kind of thing. Asphalt removal and concrete pour, more asphalt around the facility for clean, cleaning that kind of direction. Durable floor covering, I kind of like the cement floors with a good substantial finish on it. A lot of millage, that helps. The heating upgrade, I think in the spring and the fall isn't so much an issue because you can open the doors and have fresh air, which is always better. The summer, it does get sweltering hot up here. And if there isn't a breeze in the building, we could just cook those little puppies real quick. So that is something that I have concerns with and the freezing in the winter. So I did include one of the pictures and on the picture you can see how close the ceiling, the roof is to the top of the kennels. You can also see the challenge with the electrical coming from the ceiling and the heating system. Which, it's been working. It's not really efficient because of the heat loss because it's all opened. So the goal is to make the building more efficient, easier to clean, more, more, um, pretty.
Attractive.
Attractive, thank you. And I actually think that I've taken it just about as far as I can without overstepping my boundaries because it really is their decision. But there's so many more options with that building that it's incredible. The east side needs to have an more fencing enclosure so that the ACO can drive in to unload an animal in a secured facility in case there's an issue, so it can't run off property off-site. There is no exercise area for the dogs, so it could be two purposes there. One for exercising the dogs in an enclosed area and the other for the loading and unloading. One of the other assets or advantages to the reverse of where the building, the gate for entering and exiting the dogs from each indivi- individual kennel is the fact that the waste gutter is on the wrong side. It's right in front of where you put the dogs in. So if the gates were moved to the other side, it would be less expensive to replace the gates than it would be to change the gutter route, which is already attached to the system that goes into the main waste area. Any questions? Oh, let me ask John. John, do you have anything to add?
I think you pretty much answered everything. I mean, it's a work in progress, of course, so there's, wasn't to be additions.
First a mini revisions, I'm sure.
So I.
Lieutenant Betts?
Oh, I think Don Marie had something to say and I also had a, had a, something to say. So did you want to say something first?
Yeah, I have a question. Why wouldn't it be cheaper for the city of Wairega to contract out to Rescue Ranch?
Okay, you go.
So I got put in charge of animal control for about a year and a half when we had an incident. And the problem with, we, we looked around trying to maybe contract with county, we tried to contract with Rescue Ranch. But Rescue Ranch, they're a no-kill facility. We're a pound, so occasionally we do have to euthanize animals. So there's animals that wouldn't be proper to go to Rescue Ranch. They're, they don't get along with other animals. They're non-adoptable type animals. So that was one of the reasons that it broke down with the Rescue Ranch. And the county just didn't, at the time, want to negotiate or have us involved with their kennels.
Okay. Thank you for that question. Good question. So I did go with you and Steve to see the Channel Four building and as you know, I like that location. So it looks like that's listed on your list as possible. But you have remod- re- remodeled existing building as the preferred option. I like the Channel Four building better for several reasons. One, because the existing building sits in the middle of the public works, the yard. And so it's difficult on weekends for people to get access or to come get an animal or.
I have a response for that.
Oh, you do?
According to what I was told, because we are not a shelter, any animals that are in there are through, they would have to go through the police department to pick them up because they have to do the paperwork to release them. We don't, we're not open so that people can come and adopt. So they're there for a reason. So they are going to be escorted in and they have to have an officer with them, correct? Correct?
Yeah, most of the, most of our animals and John can attest to this, are usually animals of people that we arrest or they're animals that are stray and that are found. We, we, since we started working with all the nonprofit, it's Rescue Ranch, the Humane Society, whatnot, down in Mount Shasta, our adoption rate has increased immensely. So we get rid of a lot of the dogs after the seven-day holding period and whatnot, so. And then most of the other dogs that we keep are from people that go to jail. So they'll go to jail. We have to treat them as if they were our dogs, feed them, comfort them, make sure that they're okay. And some of these people are in jail for months and months and months. So we've, we've had dogs for six, eight months, which, you know, and we try to work, try to get a surrender from them. But you know, as we all know, a dog inside of a kennel for any amount of time is not a good thing. They start getting that kennel crazy and.
Well, there's no run.
It's not, it's not good for them. So we do keep dogs for a long period of time, but most people that come into our kennels are either Rescue Ranch or another agency that come to see if the dog is going to be adoptable. And then they, they will make arrangements for them to keep them. If they're not adoptable, then most of the time they're euthanized. But yeah, that's very uncommon.
Thank you.
And can I also add to that?
Sure, come on down.
Sorry.
You're out of uniform.
So I'm John Machado, the animal control officer, if you guys, you guys probably heard of that. So I have a concern for the Channel Four building being a shelter. One, for being easier access for people to just drop animals off as abandonment. Of being so close to the road and everything. Our location now is perfect for not having that problem because of the fact we're not open to the public and the public eye. So a lot of shelters have that concern, like Humane Society. Almost every week, they have some kind of animal dropped off and left there. And we do not have that problem because everyone has to call to ask where our shelter is or, sorry, our pound is. And you know, they get directions to go to the police department and then an officer escorts them to there.
So it would literally be in the same location?
Yes.
As it is now, but made a little expansion.
If I ruled the world, yes. If they, if they reach to the roof, I'd like it raised because it's too low. So if it's raised, I'd like windows all the way around or halfway around simply because natural light is better, we can save money, blah, blah, blah. I also thought about solar panels, which is Norm's thing for curbing some of the costs, so. But it has a long way to go.
Well, it looks like you made a lot of progress though. So, thank you, John.
Thank you.
I have.
And Lieutenant, yes, Don Marie?
I just have one more question. I know that there's been a lot of problems with this existing facility. Are the animals safe for this summer?
Oh, yes.
So, so the, so our animal, our facility does have misters that we turn on and the sun almost starts heating up. The winter time's a little tricky because of the power issues down there. If we have too many heaters on at one time, we'll get circuit breakers that pop and things. But we're, we're, we kind of know now what our limitations are. So it hasn't been a problem and like, and most of the dogs that we keep are for no longer than five days. So they're not there for a long period of time.
Oh, that's good.
So I guess, you know, we need to, we need to get something in motion here. What are, what's the next step then?
What's the next step, Steve?
Sir, Steve?
City manager, what's the next step? How do we make this happen?
Yes.
Well, we need to, to review this a little bit. We also will need to allocate funding towards it. And so the council will need to be involved in that decision. I haven't seen this too long, but I'm also not the person that needs to see it longer. It's probably the police department with perhaps assistance from Public Works, who are very familiar with the electrical problem, basically the, the, the electrical is nowhere close to what it should be. There are some cost savings that, that could occur with the, particularly the heating during the wintertime by enclosing it. So trying to figure out what that savings would be, would probably be part of the discussion. It probably, it probably didn't have a real, that's only part of the project, so you wouldn't expect it to have a payoff period or anything like that. But there will be savings from that and I know that's one of our, it's not one of our biggest bills. There are a lot bigger facilities, but it is something where we could save money and that's a good thing.
I found it interesting. I don't know what the age of the building is. Does anybody know the age of the building? But on the inside, it's all two by fours and just the exterior walls, there's, except for the office and the utility room. The actual area that the kennels are in is just open studs. So there's, there can be a lot of improvement to the building.
So what's the next step then? Do you go forward and work with, with the police department?
Again, if I ruled the world, somebody makes, needs to make other than me the final decisions on the amount of improvements. Pick a design, there's a gazillion options. Then once we have that in mind, we can start looking towards funding and. That's the direction I think we need to go.
I really think that the most important thing is the electricity problem. And that's, that's been our whole problem from, we're maxed out on power at the whole city yard. It's not just the kennels, it's the whole city yard. So it's, it's just a problem, period. So that's, getting that fixed would, would be a start.
Could be our first solar project.
There, there may be some opportunities for that, but we still need to upgrade the electrical. And frankly, that was one of the things that we've known about the electric, the need for the electrical upgrade for a while. And we didn't want to spend all the money to upgrade the electrical if we were going to relocate the kennel or enter into a partnership. With this being the, the number one option, I think then we go back and make that a priority to make that happen. And as Lieutenant mentioned, it's not just the kennel. The yard is underserved by the electrical and I, I can't tell you the other facilities off the top of my head and Public Works Director couldn't be here tonight, so. But it is, it is something.
It's Public Works, it's the mechanics building and it's also on the other side is the sewer.
Right, which is definitely.
And we had talked about putting that under solar.
Yeah, sewer would be tricky to do, but.
Yeah, I'm talking about putting things under solar and actually where it makes sense are two different things. Because Pacific Power does give us some pretty good rates. Also, when you look at the, the very large facilities, the, there's some load charges that you get regardless of whether you are supplying it with solar or not. So it's not as simple as some of the residential where even some of our smaller facilities don't have that same load charge. We're still looking at it. Some of the other cities are, are moving forward with at least looking at solar or maybe even putting it in. When we've looked at it, it just hasn't quite made the numbers work. But solar's getting cheaper, rates are going up, although as you recall, the city's rates, this last time that the Pacific Power increased, the city, the city's rates didn't increase at all. It was flat.
Everybody else's did.
Correct. It was not, but the, the, the buildings that, that the city has were in the commercial rate structure and those did not increase. So there's some, there's some things going on in the electricity market that aren't driving the costs up as much as we might have expected.
You know, getting back to this building, if we, if we enclose it right off the bat, the power usage for the heaters would decrease immensely right there in itself because you're heating open air. So right there, you know, there, we can almost do this in a, in a step procedure of, of phases, I should say. You know, by enclosing, that's going to make a huge difference on the electricity consumption, especially for heating and cooling in summertime.
And insulation.
And insu- and insulated, yeah. So there's a few steps that we could start off right off the. So there's a few steps that we could start off right off the bat. So I mean, I think we need to pursue, somehow pursue this a little bit further to where we can start making some type of advancements now. This is the, if this is what the, you know, the council wants to go ahead and do is, is to, I mean, to go ahead with the, basically a remodel of this facility and it sounds like we have, um, Gamache and, and Chief Betts' or excuse me, Lieutenant Betts' approval.
He's got a promotion.
Yeah, he got a promotion instantly. That's what happens to Chief Gamache when he leaves, huh?
He actually is acting chief right now.
Yeah, exactly.
So, I, I think that what we would need to do is go back and, and look at it. There are trade offs, as, as we point out, with the, open air is good for parvo.
Right.
Uh, prevention, not good for parvo, good for parvo prevention.
Yeah, there you go.
So there's, there's some trade offs that I don't pretend to understand whatsoever. And then we also have, um, we have a lot of projects going on. And, uh, including one that, that the police are, are, you're kind of done.
With your building?
Yep.
Well, there's, there's, but, but trust me, I, I've talked to them, I know that they're still working on things that, that they need to get done. So we're gonna have to do that, but I think that a phase, a phase project might be appropriate. It, it might be easier to do it all at once.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, so, anyway.
Only thing I'm afraid of is if we do it like all at once, sometimes it drags it out for so long that it doesn't get done, you know? Just look at how long it took the police station to get it in the stage.
There were two other activities in there, so.
Is that eight years? Twelve.
Twelve years.
Yeah.
That's all.
Um, but I highly recommend having it inspected because needless to say, it's not up to code either. I don't think we're allowed to have two by fours for the rafters and one screw per pole.
On, on, on a shed like that, yeah, depending on what it was built, that's perfectly legal with me code. Perfectly legal.
Can, can we get an idea when you can bring this back so we can kind of make a decision how, where we want to go?
I can't tell you that tonight, I need to talk to staff.
Oh, two to three months, something like that.
That's probably realistic.
Give them a date, let's see.
Let's not give them a date.
I don't want, I don't want to do this in six years.
I think, I think that my recommendation would be that city gets together with law enforcement. They take a look at it, they take a look at it as a single project, they take a look at breaking up into phases and then bring it back to us and let us take a look at it.
Right, within the next couple of months.
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't, I, I don't see it.
That's not an exact date, it's an approximate.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't work.
But not, not next year.
I think that would be reasonable and, because I'm thinking the phases is probably where, where we're gonna have to go.
Some things are getting done at least that way.
Yeah, if you're doing it, you know, space by, you know, phase by phase by phase, as long as you stay on track, you're okay.
And really, the first phase is the electrical, I believe.
And then I was saying the roof. But, uh, Reda, can you pull a rabbit out of your hat? Or cash?
I'm glad you said rabbit.
We will be, we will be talking about, um, overall, um, projects and financing. We actually intended to get to you in March, that's not going to happen with some strategic discussions and looking at projects. So, uh, we'll probably, you know, build that, this into that mix.
That would be good, yeah. Actually, that would be really good for to bring that into this part of strategic part of point of it, yeah.
Which with any luck, we should be able to have that discussion within that two month period as well, so.
Debbie, I want to commend you, this is great. When I got this, you did a good job. Thank you.
Very good job.
Very easy to understand.
And she's spent a lot of hours, I know.
Thank you very much.
We all do for projects, don't we?
Yes, we do. But you did a good job, so thank you. Thank you for all your time. Any more questions? No, then we'll move on. Um, so, uh, item number six, discussion park hosts, city manager.
Yeah, I'm looking for the sheet of paper that had the information on it I just had.
So, um, we had a pilot project with the park hosts last year. There were some things that we found out, uh, that we do not want to, uh, repeat. Um, I do have a, um, I don't have extra copies that I'm continuing tonight. But I do have the flyer for the volunteer park host opportunity. We currently have two, um, applicant couples, uh, for it. They will be interviewed, assuming that, um, a staff member or two gets well, uh, tomorrow morning. And, and so we'll be, uh, discussing that. So I just, um, I just want to kind of go through a little bit here and I apologize because I am reading this. But, uh, last, after last year's season, Public Works and Human Resources reevaluated the position and updated the, the flyer, which is there and.
I haven't seen that.
Park host duties, great.
Can we, can we get this email to us, please?
Yeah, we can.
That's great.
I think it also is going up on our website as well. Uh, the main goals identified for the program were to provide a presence in the park, greet park guests, lock gates in the evenings, post reservations, provide guidance on park rules, assist with light duty cleaning, that's not, not replacing the cleaning that we actually have done by others. Uh, perform some light ground maintenance, again, same thing, they're not going to be out there on the mowers, uh, mowing the, the lawns or having mower races. Uh, and they may assist the, uh, maintenance division in other, uh, project areas. This is still a new, new program, uh, it'll evolve over time. It, it worked differently than we thought it would last time. And the recruitment, if you recall, also worked differently than we thought it would be. We thought it would be a lot, uh.
Last year it took a long time. This year you've already got two, that's great.
That's good.
Yeah, so.
And we had so much community input on it.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, there's, there's been quite a bit of, of community, um, input. So we're gonna go through that and, but I do want to emphasize that this is evolving. Even our staff, we need to, uh, let them know that so that they have expectations that it may change in exactly how it works. We're trying to come up with something that, well, we're hoping that, that this year, whatever we do, works a lot better than last year. And there may continue to be improvements depending on what we learn this year, so, anyway, that's.
I notice there's not, there's not like hours here, so we don't have, in other words, this is twenty-four seven or is it, the, the past one was twenty hours a week?
Well, we provide them a stipend and we allow them to be there. You have to be very, very careful in how you identify the hours worked because of Fair Labor Standards Act. And so there are, is some, um, vagueness on purpose. It is also the way that it's done other places as well. So you're not going to see an exact number of hours, exact times.
I think that's better.
Exactly, and, and it's, I mean, if you've encountered park hosts or campground hosts, which are actually a different animal, we understand, but, uh, there's, there's kind of a certain rhythm to it that happens. And sometimes it's a little bit different based on who you get as well. And we're trying to figure out how to make that work, but also let the people who use the park know, uh, for a couple of reasons. One is so that they, uh, know when they're there and when they're not and maybe what they need to do, but also so that they don't have false expectations of how it would be there, so. I think I'm starting to repeat myself, I apologize.
For sure, it's like I said, even what we had last year was, was better than nothing, so it's, and it may put, uh, a lot of people's mind at ease knowing that we had somebody up there. And it's bound to help with, uh, YPD and the number of calls if, if we keep, you know, somebody there all the time, so.
I think it will be good to have a presence in the park.
Most definitely.
Right.
And somebody that's not afraid to stop people, yeah.
Right, there's, and there's some, I mean, there's boundaries that we want to have for what they do, what they don't do.
Well, they're not a police officer.
No, and the police department also wants to make sure that there are boundaries about what they do and they don't do as well.
For safety issues, yeah.
Yeah, so, anyway, I, I'm feeling good about where we are. But we'll see.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's the nature of it.
So tomorrow is the interviews and so, just a minute. So when will we have an answer back because we're approaching tourist season? So this is March, so hopefully we'll have a decision by April and they'll be located, they will be in there doing the job by what, May first? I know last year we were way late and we can't do that again.
I, I don't have an exact timeline, although yours sounds reasonable. As I mentioned, I need to have, uh, there's a couple of staff members that need to be involved in the interview tomorrow. Who are out ill today. So it's possible that it may need to be rescheduled from tomorrow. But.
Well, as long as we have somebody in there by the end of April, first part of May. Because that's, that's when tourism season officially starts. It is starting to warm up, though.
That's the key.
So more people will be coming into the park. There's already a lot of people.
Yeah.
Have to relook for snow tomorrow.
Yes.
Not me, there's no snow where I live. Okay, well, thank you for the update on that and please.
And that is on the website for job opportunities.
Oh, it is.
It's already up, right?
Yes.
It's on our website.
So just put job opportunities on the homepage.
Yeah, one of, one of the things we're always looking for is, you know, this isn't designed to be someone's permanent.
Right.
Uh, part-time gig. It's designed to allow, uh, people to be here for a while and then to go host someplace else, so. We are, we will be accepting applications or, or whatever it's called.
It's up, I just pulled it up.
Yeah.
So it's got, complete with a picture of the pad, um, and the lake, it looks really nice. Well, good job.
And I have to admit, people do use it that are traveling through. I actually go there daily, sometimes twice a day. And at one point, uh, a couple of weeks ago, right bef, in between snow dumpings, I was speaking with a lady who go, went on, is traveling from Seattle to Las Vegas and she does it every year. And she just this time went online because she stopped for lunch, she has a dog, she, so now that she's walking the dog, uh, she found us on the website for places to hike, so.
Hey, good.
A traveler going through, it's working like it's supposed to, so, very nice.
I helped a lady coming through with a, a woman coming through with a bicycle and stuff and, and recreational sticker stuff all over her car. And as she, she was asking where to go ride her mountain bike and, uh, couldn't find the chamber, couldn't find anybody else. So I was trying to give her directions and she kind of, you know, and I said, "Follow me." And so I took her to the park and I, and right there at the park, they have that little fold out that gives you the, the map of all the. She was thrilled. She was going to go back to her organization that she works with and put it on their map for places to stop if people wanted to ride.
Good.
Yeah, that's pretty cool. Okay. So we're gonna come back to the next meeting with something.
With news, right?
Good news.
Yes, good, good news.
I can make that happen.
The next meeting is April four. Oh, I'm sorry, John Marie.
Um, I was just gonna say, I know that this is a new program and stuff, but at some point, if this is taking off and doing really good, maybe we could get like that on Lower Green Horn, seems to be two entities for some reason. Especially after all of this stuff that we just went through. Lower Green Horn is getting to be scary.
I, I guess all I can say is comment noted, we also have another site up on Deer Creek as well. It's, it could be used for that, but this, we need to work the, uh.
Put the bugs out of this one.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of the right word, bugs is fine, yeah.
But thank you, that's, that's noted. Look into that after we get this one taken care of. Okay, thank you. Okay, so I think we're down to city manager and staff reports. Betts gave his staff report.
Oh, no, he's coming down again.
You've got more?
The city manager told me I can't always say no.
Good thing you came tonight.
So just a little bit of what, like, the police department's been doing, um, this month or last week. Sergeant Booton, we assisted Trinity County District Attorney's Office in a conflict case that they were having, um, over in their county. So, uh, Sergeant Booton was assigned to go over there and actually take a case and work that case for Trinity County. So that case will be submitted to their district attorney's office this week or something. Ended up being nothing, but they needed help, they called, we sent somebody who helped them, so.
That's interesting.
The reason, the reason Trinity County is because Dan Diaz, who used to be a police officer here, works for the district attorney's office over there. He called a bunch of the other agencies, no one really wanted to get involved or help out because it had to deal with an undersheriff that used to work for Trinity County, so called us. Chief Gamache said, "No problem, we'll go," took care of it.
Do we get a kickback on that? Some financial kickback, I'm curious.
I don't think the word is.
Sergeant Booton did do it, um, there was minimal overtime, it was, he went on his day of work.
Oh, wow.
And over there and came back on the same day.
Well, that's great, you could help them. They do not have any incorporated cities in Trinity County.
No.
They just have the sheriff.
So that worked out really good. We did get the, uh, vehicle removed from Lower Green Horn.
I saw that, good job.
Took us, you know, it takes time, it took us probably a month and a half to take care of that situation. But, uh, we, we made a date and we, um, resolved that situation with, uh, no real problems. One person going to jail and the car being towed. And the mess being cleaned up, uh, mostly by, uh, my officers. So that was, uh, that was good, that was good job on, uh, the officer's part. We also had to clean up this week behind Taco Bell and Rayleigh's. Terrible back there.
The pictures were awful.
Caltrans had a hazmat team behind Taco Bell, um, down over the embankment. They cleaned up from, um, behind Taco Bell, they cleaned up the couches that were in off of, uh, Moonlit Oaks, all the way up to the Rayleigh sign and then, um, Ramon Phillips, I think his name is, takes care of the property. He, he came in and we worked with him on making sure there was nobody in those camps and that those camps were basically vacated. And him and some of his, uh, volunteers and employees came in and picked up the rest of it. I did post two things on the internet. Uh, we were talking earlier at our coalition, homeless coalition meeting about, uh, Facebook. And I looked it up when I got back and we had six thousand five hundred and forty-one hits on my first post, which was just basically words of what we did. And then I posted pictures of before and after and we had eleven thousand six hundred and eighty-six hits, um, on, on the photos.
That's good support.
It really gets the word out and if they see pictures, they like it more, so we need more pictures. Other than that, um, we're still working, uh, we, our next project's obviously going to be Fairlane Road under the bridge. It's a real problem. We do have some, uh, plans in the works for Lower Green Horn that are being implemented, uh, including extra patrols. That problem's probably going to be resolved within the next two weeks when that shelter, stormy shelters close down, so. We're managing and hopefully we can continue to manage the homeless situation that we have, so.
What percentage of your, um, time goes to dealing with the homeless?
I, I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty percent of my guy's day is dealing with homeless or homeless related issues, um, every day.
How much?
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent?
Fifty percent of their day is dealing with homeless or homeless issues, uh, within the community.
That's a lot, that's too much.
Yeah, it is.
If they moved to Newark, they can get basic income now, Newark, New Jersey.
Yeah.
What?
Yeah, four hundred dollars a month, every person, yeah.
They're paying them to be homeless.
Paying everybody four hundred dollars a month, you have a basic income.
Well, Alaska does.
Just like Stockton did about two years ago.
Don't give California any more ideas.
Yeah. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
That's good, good job, Chris, thank you, Lieutenant Betts.
So I don't really want to follow that, but I have to anyway. So we have, I, I checked with all of your schedules and the, uh, chamber workshop on redoing the agreement with the chamber is, uh, I have actually two dates, uh, the primary, primary date is April third, the backup date is April eighth. So if you could, for right now, circle April third, I need to, um, touch base with the chamber and make sure that's still a go day for them, but they did tell me earlier.
Wednesday?
That is true, that is a Wednesday.
What time?
Uh, I'm shooting for five thirty, that seems to be sort of the, the reasonable compromise where we get in, get out. In Newton Park, we either are taking out or have already taken out, uh, trees on the border of Newton Park and the community gardens. These are some old, uh, kind of nasty looking junipers. And, um, so they're taking out, um, they're leaving one out of every three trees. Interestingly enough, those trees were planted directly on top of our irrigation line. So that's caused some problems over the years. It, uh, this actually came up as a result of one of the pool meetings where someone said, you know, those really are something that you should take out of there. Public Works staff looked at it and said, "Yeah, we've kind of wanted to do that, let's, let's go." So they, if they're not out already, they, they, uh, they will be. Uh, the county has declared their land on Foothill Surplus, the land that originally was for the jails. So they're planning to put that back out onto the market, I haven't heard anything more tha, than that.
Yeah, they told me they were doing this.
The section eight waiting list, uh, for. The Section Eight waiting list, uh, for the seven counties is, uh, going to be open between April fifteenth and, uh, May thirty-first. This is a way that our low-income households have an opportunity to get a rent subsidy. We only have, they're only up here one day, so all the rest of the applications will have to be mailed in. We will, um, we will get some of those. We're also going to give them to the library and there's probably some other social service agencies that will, will do that. The interesting thing is that they no longer prioritize the applications like they used to where, say, if you were disabled homeless and, or disabled and paying more than fifty percent of your income for renting, you might be in the top part. It, it's done by lottery, which I have written as, um, lootery. Uh, I just had to share that. It's kinda fun to see typos sometimes. Uh, depending on how you feel about lotteries, lootery might be a good word. Uh, the, the Wairika Flock Swap, uh, this is an annual event that comes up. It's scheduled for April third on China Hill north of Highway Three. So back up behind the, um.
When is that?
That's, uh, April third at noon and it's usually a little over an hour.
April third on a Wednesday? Last week, last year I helped with that. It was on a weekend.
What was it?
That's the, that's the date that they sent me. So, um, if I find out it's wrong, I'll send you an email.
It might be the sixth. That's the Saturday, but.
Okay.
What, what, um, what location does it start at?
Yeah, um, you know where the flock site is? It's kind of up behind, I can't remember the name of the road. It's right behind the, the Chinese cemetery.
Juniper. Juniper.
Is Juniper the next one? Okay, you go up Juniper and then you go left on a road that where you should have a high clearance vehicle, in my opinion.
Okay.
Ain't taking the first up there.
No.
Um, and then, uh, you go up there and, and I'm not sure exactly where they start at this point because they've made some changes to the road up there and it depends a little bit on whether or not the puddle is dry. But somewhere up there on that flat is usually where they start and it's, uh, usually a good opportunity to see our, uh, our city flower, which is also an endangered species and that's why the preserve is, is up there. And, um, anyway, it's kind of a cool thing. Only place that it grows is around Wairika and there's some other ones that look a little bit alike, but they're not our city flower, though.
And you wouldn't know unless you were a biologist, right?
Or you, or you have one with you, which is kinda where.
That's illegal. You can't pull them, right, unless?
No, no, you have the botanist with you.
Oh, the botanist.
Yeah. I don't know what you thought I said, but I didn't, I'm not suggesting that you pull them at all.
The flocks know. That you'd get arrested.
Yeah, that's, that would be one of those environmental crimes they would be after before, so, uh, not doing that. So anyway, um, I think that completes my report.
Okay.
Don East is asked us.
Don?
Actually, Joan, you can come over to the flocks in the window. We have a preservation.
You have flocks in the window or is that the one that's in the?
It's in the stained glass windows.
It's in your stained glass window. It's there forever. It will never, never go out of style. That's great. Okay, anyone? Oh, who's next? Deb?
Um, okay, I had a LAFCO meeting this week and.
Oh, good.
They're always really short and sweet, so that's kinda cool. Um, and I had a friends at the fair meeting, which isn't government at all, but they do have some nice events getting ready to happen. Um, sportsman's.
This weekend.
Expos this weekend. They also have their yard sale coming up. So if you need something to do, there's always some, there really is always something to do. So, but everything else is good. That's awesome.
Oh, good. Great. Thank you.
I, I just wanna thank, uh, Joan and Don and David and, uh, it's a guy and.
Yep.
Um.
Charlie.
Charlie.
Charlie Gillingham for the signs, 'cause they really do spice up when you come off.
Yes.
You see them, they really look good. And for me.
And Ralph Sterrett.
And Ralph Sterrett. I'm from a much smaller town than Wairika. I grew up in a much smaller town in Southern California. They're there. Uh, and that was, yeah, and when you went through these small rural areas, that's the first thing you look for and all the churches were up there and the service clubs and everything. So thank you for doing all the work. I, it really makes our community better.
It does.
Excellent. Anything else?
No.
Oh, great. Don?
Well, I went to the Madrone Hospice Dinner and Art Auction on Friday and, uh, took a break from working every single night. But, uh, they raised, uh, more money than they did last year, so it was a good success.
Great. That's it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Went to a couple of meetings, but this one, I did a Siski homelessness coalition meeting we had today, um, was actually really, um, really good. We covered a lot of different things. Here's some of the things I'll discuss briefly over what we've discussed. Uh, emergency shelter, crisis intervention outreach, transportation, housing vouchers, permanent supportive housing and affordable housing, um, health and mental health services, substance use disorders services. And there's, and we went over needs and goals and all different sorts of aspects on this. So it is, when it comes down to these meetings, there's, we have a lot of people on board, a lot of government entities, um, county. We have sheriff's department. We have our local law enforcement. We have people at home. We have, like I said, a lot of, a lot of agencies, um, Mount Shasta, Weed, involved in the Siski homelessness coalition. Um, so when we, when we do these meetings, or like today was from ten to noon and they, a lot of times will start a little bit before that and they go well afternoon too, when we go into these meetings. But they're very, um, educational in our aspect of what we learned from it too, because there's a lot of agencies that bring to the table that we didn't know even existed, some of the things that they do for the homeless population, what's available and, you know, solving those issues, but as best we can. There's a lot of funding that's now starting to get circulated finally. Like, you know, the state of California is starting to recognize this issue, which is big going on, but it's increasingly getting worse. And it was our, ours increased, what, forty-seven percent, I guess, um, is homeless activity? So there's considerable amount, and this is the West Coast is primarily hit. Um, I think the number was a year or two ago that we actually had, what, seventy percent of the housed, seventy percent of the homeless population of the United States on the West Coast. So that's the, the biggest impact is on the West Coast. So it's great that finally the state of California is finally starting to get involved in it and, and allocating some money towards this issue and hopefully we'll start seeing more and more, um, just like we were talking about before and I've said this numerous times. A point in time count has a huge impact on bringing some money to rec- you know, recognition to where they know that we actually have a homeless population, which will hopefully trickle down and hopefully help our law enforcement do, you know, keep things clean and, and keep our parks clean and keep, uh, our city clean. So.
And our people safe.
And our people safe, first and foremost. So, um, these meetings are very useful and I'm glad I'm a part of it. And it's, it's Joan's been a part of it. It's Freeman, our mayor, and Steve has been very active in it too, very active. So it's great that we have all these, oh, and Lieutenant Bets, of course, I just, I can't leave him out. He's been very active in it too. So it's great that we all are.
On the ground.
Yes, we're all involved in this and that there is, you know, recognizing there is a need this, for this and that we're all being involved just to let you guys know that we're, we're doing something about it as much as we can, legally can, you know? And it's trying to make a, a positive impact as best we can, so. Um, that's basically all I got to say. I'll keep it short and sweet as best I can.
Good job. Thank you and thank you for going to that meeting. Gee, I'm sorry I couldn't make it.
It was very good.
It was kind of a crazy day. Um, so it's been a pretty busy, uh, couple of weeks for me too. I first wanted to say, I don't know if there's anybody here from the YMCA, but I attended the YMCA fundraiser on Saturday night and it was packed at the community center. And, uh, the kids did a skit, um, their theme was Narnia. And so they had the lion, the witch and the wardrobe. Of course, the children, the children, they're teenagers, they made up for that. But they did such a great job. It was, it was really fun and it was a great crowd there. Also, we had a ringy, uh, pool stakeholder meeting and I want to thank, um, Councilmember Paul McCoy. Thank you for coming. It's, uh, I think it's growing. We're getting more and more stakeholders at the table. Uh, we, uh, have found a grant that the state of California is offering, which amazingly does not have a required match. Uh, we've got some great resources at the table, people that have done grants before. Uh, we have six different committees under this over, overarching stakeholder committee and the committees have all been meeting and working hard on it. Look for some, oh, and there's Catherine in the back of the room. Catherine's been on that committee since the beginning. Thank you, Catherine, for all your good work. And we're going to be having fi- the grant requires five community meetings to be held within a half-mile radius of the location of the pool. Uh, it's a Parks and Rec, uh, grant. So we're in the process of doing that. Those will all be coming up and you'll be seeing them advertised. We'll have flyers available and we'll be walking the area as well to educate the public about what's going on. And, uh, it's, I just this afternoon met with, um, Amy Evans. Uh, she's the new chair of this group. She's also the president of Splash. Those of you that know about Splash, it's the nonprofit organization that has managed the pool for the city for a number of years and did a really good job. So, uh, she and I had, uh, a pretty, uh, several pages of notes. So we're active and we're, we're working together with them, uh, and I, it's going well, but it's not an overnight fix. We have to, we have to apply for the grant and the grant's due in August. Uh, the grant notice, uh, just went out, uh, a few weeks ago and we had some people from our community, three, that went down, um, to get more information on it. So we're in the process of gathering the information we need for that grant. The grant's due in August. And it will be awarded, I think, next April. So it's a, it's a long process. It's not an overnight process.
What's the size of the grant, please?
It's at, uh, it's an eight million dollar grant.
Eight or an half million?
Point two million.
Eight point two million.
Oh, my goodness.
That's the cap, so.
That's cap.
That's the cap. That's as high as you can go, so.
Still.
Yeah, right. It was a good find and I'll have to say that, um, that Corey Hayden was the one that originally found that there was a meeting in writing, um, to, to roll out the grant and to let people know about it. So we had three people from Wairika go down, uh, that are familiar with grant writing, that are volunteers in the stakeholder group.
Okay, we need to swear everybody to secrecy so it improves our chances.
Oh, yeah. Tell the people that are looking at this on TV.
Yes.
Uh, anyway, uh, yeah, so I think that's going along well. It's, um, everybody is working well together, I think, and so I really appreciate it. So, uh, Steve and I met with the tribal chair recently. We had a really good meeting to talk about, you know, all of us working well together. I think we have. We talked about some issues that are coming up and we just had a very positive meeting, I thought, didn't you? It was a really good meeting. It was the tribal chair and the executive director of the tribe and the manager, um, the general manager of the casino. And by the way, the casino and the tribe are at the table with the stakeholders group for the pool. So that's good news. We've got, um, we'll be going out to the community to get more businesses involved. As, and the schools have been there and the college has been there and so, um, I, I think we've got a lot of support at the table. Uh, the Ford Family Foundation was in town this week, uh, last week. In fact, they were in Siski County most of the week. They had a community building workshop in Weed at the brand-new community center, which is amazing, by the way. It's beautiful. Uh, you know, the bad news is they had a fire. The good news is Weed is just booming. They've got, you know, new buildings and they've got a lot of good things going on. Carlos Suarez, who is the chief of the California Natural Resources Conservation Service, was in town. I found out at the very last minute, um, and went to a meeting with him. There is some funding that may be available to help with our fire safe councils and to help with fire suppression. So we can talk about that and look into that. Also met today with battalion chief, isn't that his title, Phil Anzo, um, to talk about, um, some issues that came up with our workshop with our fire department. Uh, we had a very good meeting, uh, and so we're going to be looking into some options. But while we were meeting with him about the fire department, we also talked to him about some grant funding for the fire safe councils and ways that we can all work together to make Wairika safe.
Good.
Um, because as you know, we had a fire at the north end and south end of town and luckily we've got a great fire department and we've got CalFire right here and they called in air tankers and we're very fortunate that those fires and that the wind wasn't blowing hard. We, we got those fires out quickly. But we don't want that to happen again, so we need to really, you know, work on the dry areas. We have a lot of hills around town and so, uh, you know, I know that your fire safe council's working on that and Norm is our, uh, representative on the Wairika Fire Safe Council. So, uh, anyway, there's some funding available, so we can talk about that. And, oh, Local Transportation Commission. I have to tell you the good news. So, uh, we got a, a, I don't know if you call it a grant. We got a portion of the money that comes down to the Local Transportation Commission from Sacramento and we have a project on there. And Wairika asked, um, th- that we get our, um, our funding, uh, as we spend the money to get it back. They don't usually do that. They usually only give you your money at the end of a project. Um, we had, um, some discussion on that and that was at the meeting and we will be getting reimbursed. I should tell you that, um, like, you know, at, at, like quarterly or however, however often we ever, we need it, monthly if we need it. But it was approved by the Local Transportation Commission.
So this is for road repairs?
It is for road repairs, right, for our road department. Um, so that was good. The Aviation Management Consulting Group was there and they're gonna be doing work, um, on, um, virtually almost all of the airports within Siski County, our little airport out here included. So, uh, it's been a pretty busy, oh, there's a quarterly division meeting of the Northern California League of California Cities Meeting tomorrow in West Sacramento. Anybody that wants to go? I'll be leaving bright and early. You can catch it, catch on with me if you want. Anyway, so, uh, and I'll bring a report back from that meeting because we usually have really good speakers that lets us know what's going on in Sacramento and, and how we can, I don't wanna say protect ourselves, how we can deal with new things that are coming up and maybe take advantage of, of good funding opportunities for projects in our communities. That's it. Yes.
It's okay if I shamelessly let you know that, um, the History Alliance is again sponsoring, uh, some of the minor street blocks, tomorrow at five. Mike Grifantini has a special tour of Sonic Hall and there's a requested donation, um, per person, but anyway, that's available and open to the public. Uh, I think I got one thing posted on Facebook for the rest of the tours for the season. It isn't as often as last year, but he will do private tours and his number is there and, and whatnot. But, um, they have been blessed by Churchill for our insurance, so, um.
Great. And you know, I've seen Mike Grifantini in his getup. I don't know if you've seen him with his top hat and his old times. He looks great. He definitely looks the part and he does a great job.
He does.
That's wonderful. Great.
Those will be happening again.
That's wonderful, for the tour season.
Yeah, not as many, but there will be and, and it's posted on Facebook and probably will be on our website by the first of April.
Great. We'll look forward to that. That's wonderful. Okay, uh, anything else for the good of the order? No? Oh, yes, Joan.
Well, I've got a later one. Red Scar. Red Scar has a concert coming up on Sunday, the thirty-first of March and it's fifty years of Scott Durbin. Scott Durbin is a local. He's done a lot of music in South County. He composes and he will have his group. Questin Kinekro, Crowe is going to be singing.
Great.
And, um, um, it's, uh, three P M. Tickets are at, um, uh, Nature's Kitchen, Liberty Parks and the Chamber. You get in ahead of time. It's twenty dollars, twenty-five at the door. We're looking for a sellout crowd.
Is it at the community center?
It's gonna be at Wairika, yeah.
Wairika Community.
It's gonna be at, it's gonna be at the theater with a reception.
Wairika Community Theater, that's what I meant. Great, wonderful. Thank you for sharing that. Okay, anything else? Okay, meeting adjourned at seven fifty-nine. Thank you all for being here.